Just like.
As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call this special joint meeting of the Stanton City Council and Stanton Planning Commission to order for December 14th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. And I, Judith Swiggen, as Chair of the Stanton Planning Commission, also called this meeting to order at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. The first item. On December 13th, 2021, I received a request from Councillor Dole to participate remotely in the December 14th, 2021 special called meeting of Stanton City Council meeting due to a family member's medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councillor Dole's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three, I move to allow Councillor Dole to remotely participate in the December 14th, 2021 special called meeting of Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Yeah, we do not. Where's Counselor?
I was about to say.
Where's Counselor Darby?
He's coming.
We need to wait until Counselor Darby.
He comes. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Oh, a second. All right, we have a second by Counselor Darby. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
No.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. I'll now ask Counselor Dole to please state the remote location from which she is participating.
1003 East Beverly Street, Stanton.
All right, could everyone on City Council, as well as the Planning Commission and the audience here, Counselor Dole?
Yes.
Welcome, Counselor Dole. The next item, on December 13th, 2021, I received a request from Councillor Mead to participate remotely in the December 14th, 2021 special called meeting of Stanton City Council meeting due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councillor Mead's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
Mr. Mr. Rosenberg, I understand that Councillor Mead attended the breakfast this morning for the Chamber of Commerce breakfast? Did she?
Vice Mayor Robertson, I don't have personal information that she attended. I am aware from the interim clerk of council that she registered, she had the interim clerk of council register her to attend.
Okay.
But I do not know whether she in fact attended.
Okay, because we checked with them and they said there was no Zoom capable capability to that meeting.
I don't know the circumstances of the meeting, Mr. Vice Mayor.
My point is if she could attend that, she sure can attend this. Pursuant to.
I did not attend that meeting.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three, I move to allow Councillor Mead to remotely participate in the December 14th, 2021 special called meeting of Stanton City Council meeting due to a medical condition.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Mayor Oaks, I'll second. All right, Counselor Darby has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
No.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that takes us on to the special meeting. And the first item is Item A.
Mayor Oaks.
Yes.
I apologize for interrupting, but again, to comply with.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I have to ask, did everyone here, excuse me, Counselor Mead, can you please state the remote location in which you're participating in this meeting?
342 Sherwood Avenue, Stanton.
All right, could everyone here, Counselor Mead?
Yes.
All right, did that meet the requirement? Mr. Blair?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you for keeping us straight. Now, on to the special meeting. Item A is an overview and discussion of design guidelines for entrance corridor overlay districts. Mr. Rosenberg.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council and the planning commission. I'll turn this over to Rodney Rhodes, the city senior planner, who will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we have Bill and Kathy Frazier of Frazier Associates LLC to give an overview of our guidelines, our design guidelines for entrance corridor. They have been contracted by the city to work with the city to rewrite these guidelines. The original set of guidelines were adopted in 2008, so we've had quite a bit of experience with these guidelines, and this has been a priority for, I'm guessing, at least five years to review these and update these, rewrite them as we see necessary. And this past year, council provided the funding. We sent out a request for proposals, received proposals from four different firms, and after the interview process, we selected Frazier Associates that has more experience than I believe anyone in the country in writing entrance corridor guidelines. So with no further ado, Bill and Kathy Frazier.
Welcome, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
It's our pleasure. Yeah, we're honored that we get to be a part of this. We love Stanton and have enjoyed raising our kids here and, and being a part of the community since the 1970s, with a couple of short interludes away. We always came back. So if everyone would like to get the most comfortable they can in order to see the presentation, does it, oh, it comes up there for everyone? Okay, right. Okay, so let's start. Our project understanding, which, which comes from the RFP itself, obviously is to establish new guidelines based on reviewing the old ones, ensuring that these are easy to read and understand, and they have lots of graphics, and we'll show you samples of that later on, and that they're written clearly so that property owners, developers, their architect designers, and anybody leasing space in those buildings understands what this is all about, and that actually the result will be enhanced character in the district. New technologies, as they're changing, and as we study corridors through time, and Stanton has many examples, we see lots of different changes in technologies, materials, and so forth. Talk more about that later. And then the last understanding was to understand to protect the heritage of the historic areas and the, these corridors that lead to them, and we'll mention something about that in a minute. So I just wanted to make it clear, because when we looked at the existing guidelines, there were some, some different elements in it that, that made us decide to tell you about things you already know. A plan creates a vision, it has a timeline, and you implement things that actually create concrete projects. Standards are very detailed. Standards are in your zoning ordinance and a lot of your site plan review. It's very limited flexibility, has lots of numbers, and here's what you must do, setbacks, height, so forth. It goes into a lot of detail, and it may or may not have any graphics. And currently, we see your guidelines as having guidelines, some elements of a plan, and elements of standards together. We, when we do guidelines and guidelines for quarters, neighborhoods, historic districts, rural areas, villages, we've done all kinds of guidelines. They're really more conceptual, they take common sense, they allow flexibility, they still reflect the underlying zoning. They're much more specific than some of your general language in your cop plan, obviously, and they're graphic rich. So right now Stanton has the 13 quarters leading to the historic area, the historic districts that are all contiguous and the, starting in the downtown. And the state legislation for corridor review comes out of their relationship to historic districts. In fact, that, that they do go to the districts, to the districts, that gives the review power in the state legislate, the state legislation. And downtown really is the heart of communities. It's either healthy or not, and the arteries leading to it are healthy or not. And a lot of times, we call them arteries, it's corridors, but it really has that, that link to an overall community. Here's some early historic views of Stanton's corridors. How did they originate? Well, they started with paths and trails with Native Americans. They ended up being roads, and then US roads, and then interstates. The railroad had a huge part to play in Stanton's expansion, and of course, in the 20th century, the automobile has, has created so much change to all of our quarters. Here's a 19th century map showing the Valley Pike, coming from, all the way up from Winchester down near Stanton. Stanton is with the arrow, I mean, the star, and we see the littler roads leading, leading out from it. And so the Valley Pike was the, came from the, the trail from the, the Native Americans. That became Route 11, and 250 was Richmond Road. Came from that connection from the east where the growth in, in the rest of Virginia was as, as, as people came west. Then we've got just connector roads in the county that go out, particularly on the western side, and they're very different quarters, and some of them are just going to other counties' locations. And then, of course, we've got one that goes into West Virginia, 250 in Churchville. Here's Virginia on the eve of the Civil War, and you can see this Stanton is in the absolute middle of the state. And that was very important before West Virginia was founded, because it resulted in, in many state institutions and education institutions being built here, which created a lot more growth, and it, and it helped form the character that we have today. And all of these, of course, historic buildings designed by important architects from Baltimore and Washington and so forth. In 1893, Stanton had more building, new buildings going on than any city in Virginia, and therefore, we've had a very sophisticated architectural vocabulary, because we had people from New York, Chicago, Boston, and so forth, and TJ Collins, who came from Washington, and he had worked with the postal department designing and working up there. So as a result, when you lay all of that on a grid over seven hills, you all of a sudden get tremendous views, you get an unusual streetscape, you get a unique character to this community. And then throughout the 20th century, downtown was that heart, and the corridors led to it and still do. Everything was downtown, and then things started to change with the rise of the automobile in the 60s. Here's Stanton in 1944. There's a Masonic Temple Building. You can see that pretty much every lot is built on in Stanton at that time in its history.
The first time I saw this, it was a huge photograph on the wall, and I didn't know where it was, and then I saw the Masonic Building, and I was like, oh, my gosh.
Yeah, really.
Square inch was built on in downtown.
There was very little open space, obviously. But then, as, as the automobile became more important, then corridors became more important, and then people started to move where there was more parking and auto related, and then downtown started to die. And and here it is in 1977. You can see the level of destruction that occurred between 44 and 77. There was probably three or four dozen buildings were taken down, mostly for parking, and we've now built back with the latest parking deck Kathy designed. That's the one open space that's been filled in. However, we kept Main Street, and we kept the Row of the Wharf, and so on, on foot, it really does feel like a very historic, interesting community that's kept so much of its history. It's only when you look back and see how much you lost, it's sort of interesting. When I started here in 76 as Director of Historic Stanton, there was a different ethic here, to say the least. So 45 years later, this tax base of downtown has more than tripled. That was a tripled over about 10 years ago. Continuing to grow, it's had a huge impact. Not, not for me. These are all from national media since 2012 and since 18. We've had several more since then, but pretty much all the key national media and magazines and publications have put Stanton as one of the top 25 small towns, one of the top 10 small towns in the United States, one of the most architecturally interesting small towns, one of the best mountain towns, one of the best towns to retire, goes on and on. And so that's just an incredible impact. I don't know of any other town in Virginia that's gotten this many accolades, to say the least. And if we ever put one of, one of those with the logo on each banner coming in from Richmond Road, you'd have quite a bragging story to tell. So why are quarters important? Well, obviously, they introduce people through the gateways, and that's how we get through the community. We have to have them. They're basic to our society. Most of us use them every day, so we get used to them. Several of them are major visitor and corridor routes, tourist routes. And in that regard, they provide a first impression.
Should I tell a story about?
Oh, they may have heard of you. Sure, sure. And they locate most retail and so much, so much of our jobs and economic growth and come from that. But Kathy wants to tell you a quick little story.
A quick little story. The owner of the Visually, Adam Greenbaum, came to Stanton the first, looking for a theater, and he arrived by train, and he got off the train and walked up against the street and called his wife and said, I think I found the theater of the Visually. The next time he came, he came by car, and he, and he told me, and I've used this in presentations, he said, you know, if I'd come by car, I'm not sure I would have stayed, because the quarters were not very inviting. So it was just a great experience to arrive the old fashioned way by train and be in the heart. So it was like a huge opening, say, great opportunity with the quarters.
Okay, so in the cop plan, we just pulled these couple of, of statements that you all have, have created over the last few years in the last update of encouraging new development, well planned, mixed uses, et cetera, appropriate landscaping, design, signage, building, view shed, so forth. And then your three-year priorities are review both the zoning and the review of this corridor overlay, the guidelines that are based on, you know, the ordinance that you enacted. Here are just some sample quarter guideline goals that we take. These are from probably three or four other communities we've worked in, but just to give you a general overall view of some things that we would be looking at. Obviously, the economic development aspect, the functional aspect, it's the enhancing the appearance, masking the utilitarian appurtenances and utilities and so forth, creating inviting public realm, refers to the streetscape, the public areas, the roads, the lighting, landscape, if there is, if there is landscaping. City's responsibility. Some level of human scale that attracts people to the buildings and spaces. Depending on which quarters we're talking about, and they're very different, the pedestrian experience may be important, it may not be critical. Connectivity certainly would be between sites, and then a sense of place that really says this is Stanton and somehow. And that's, that's a, that's a tricky one, because what does that mean? So when we look at quarters, we start with, we said with the gateway, are they well defined? Can you tell you're starting a, an experience in a community? And what does that gateway look like? The paths along it? Views, both good and bad, out from it. Transition areas, it may be intersections, it may be a change in land use, it may be a change in the scale of buildings or the periods, or you may go from commercial to residential and so on. And then obviously, the sites all along them, the buildings, how they're placed, relationships to each other, their scale and size and so forth, and then the ultimate destination. That realize there is a destination to quarters. And I never forget, back in the 70s, when we were talking about revitalizing downtown, we were told by one of the state people that the first thing you need to do is take all the parking off the streets, because you're slowing down traffic. And we tried to tell them that no one bought anything at 35 miles an hour. Downtown was a destination. It wasn't an obstacle course, that that's, that's the end of the corridor, anyway. So the typical sequence then is just mentioned, generally, you know, it goes from rural to urban and new to old, and it grows out, and it gets more dense as you get closer, and you end up with smaller, more historic buildings than you do larger parcels and buildings on the outside. And you go more to a pedestrian emphasis, obviously, when you hit the heart of downtown. So why do quarters look like the way they do, and how do they function like the way they do? Well, how long have they been around? What's the topography like? Has there been much growth? Was there any regulation, and what was that regulation? When they started to be developed through time, how did that regulation affect it? And then what were the architectural tastes and building technology that created the appearance of the, of the architecture? And was there an overall vision and goals, or was it, was it, did it occur sort of organically? And every community's different, and every quarter's a different because of all those influences. There are lots of types, obviously. We have some of all of that, historic, commercial, and residential, some aging strips of newer commercial, enhanced commercial, limited access roads, loop roads, you know, parkways, things like that. We've got those institutional and office areas and industrial. Most common attributes of, of the quarters, at least throughout the United States, as, as the country grew in post-World War II era, and up until the third quarter of, of this past century, lots of auto oriented, lots of signage, the rise of franchise businesses, that's where they all went. Lots of variety in this building forms and sizes and site layouts. It was not meant for people to walk around in. It's really auto oriented. Landscaping originally was not a part of many of these quarters. Signage became more frequent and larger. The maintenance, and you can see that everywhere, varies tremendously. Often a lack of vision, there's a lot of the design and urban designers and landscape and architects, say, anywhere USA, became kind of like you, no matter where you were, you had a very similar corridor experience. As they age, then, like all of us, then we start having some issues, and, and certainly, we had lots of traffic, which is good in many, in many aspects, but overbuilt space. But consumers today are not the consumers of the 1970s, that's for sure, and there's huge change in demographics. The fuel cost, and now we're seeing that's going up again, the recession we had, and that's had a huge impact. The biggest probably has been the internet and the shopping on the internet, and we'll talk about that in a second. From 60 to 2000, this is from the Urban Land Institute, which is a national development group out of Washington. There was a tenfold increase in retail space. Per person in the United States used to be four square feet, it went to 38. So retail space grew five or six times faster than retail sales. The result is we've got an overbuilt environment, and so depending on the quarters and the cities, you're beginning to see this happen. And gosh, we were heading out to Michigan to give a talk at a state planning conference, and we stopped one night in Columbus, Ohio, and drove down one corridor, and we're trying to find our open motel. There were so many vacant structures and buildings that we turned around and left and went to another part of town to stay, because it was so deteriorated. These are major chains and older chains, and probably four out of five buildings were vacant. I'd never seen anything like it. This is what they're telling us, though.
We're lucky.
We are lucky. We're in the right place and hopefully at the right time. So there's very few malls being built. 300 have closed. This is, this information is several years old. 30% are getting redone, and after the recession, there's over a billion square feet of vacant retail space in the United States. And you're starting to see demolition or repurposing of older malls, and the gosh, just look what happened here. So the world is changing when it comes to that aspect, and we just have to be aware of the challenges involved. There are lots of opportunities, too. However, you know, our quarters aren't going anywhere. They're really key to our transportation. A lot of them can be redeveloped and reused, and in our case, we're getting to build new stuff that was on vacant land. And our high volume of traffic at 81 and 64 puts us in a great spot, and you know, we're seeing, you know, Wayansboro already being, being changed by the Charlottesville overflow because of the cost of living up there. And Perrisburg, of course, with JMU has grown like weeds. We're doing so much work up there with developers. It's amazing. We already have the infrastructure in place in all these quarters, and it only makes sense to take advantage of that. It's a lot cheaper. And obviously, a lot of important people who live in the community have some interest in these quarters, are business owners and tenants and so forth that have jobs there, and it's a very important aspect. How can you develop it to have it more value, create more value for the community, both economically and, and physically, visually, and functionally? The reality in smaller markets is that let's analyze what we've got, and we, this is a part of what we would do to create guidelines that make sense for the quarters. We want to do one set, but we will customize some aspects within that set, depending on the quarter, that makes sense for that quarter. It probably doesn't make sense to have a blanket aspect of every one of them. And then there's to be flexibility, too, to allow, you cannot decide every physical condition and site condition in every parcel by writing a book with graphics and words and 100 pages. It's not, it's not useful. And so you need a realistic revision of how much change is possible, and what kind of change do you want, and what do you want it to look like, and how dense do you want it to be? So some aspects that we'll show you from other, from other quarter studies we've done and guidelines is enhancing intersections, creating clusters. We certainly already see that in the automotive cluster on Rich, on Greenville Avenue. Where can you have more dense areas? And in our case, in a smaller community, you're going to have limited aspects compared to, say, Northern Virginia or Tidewater somewhere. But growing quarters, downtown quarters outward, and here we see Robin Miller buying the old Stanton laundry and talking to you all. Perfect example of realizing, I can't tell you how many people come to us and say, do you know where there's a historic house downtown that I could walk to, I could have outdoor space, and I can have a garage or off-street parking? Well, that's challenging. But there's so many people want to walk to downtown. That's why they hear about Stanton, and that's why they come here. And so this idea, can you grow the quarters out from downtown, increase that development? That might be a lot more dense, it might be taller, might not be set back so far. You'd have to provide parking somehow within the site, and you'd want to tie it in with the pedestrian network that already exists. So that would be very different from a Richmond Road set of guidelines, if that makes sense. So here's in general, you know, the types of things. Obviously, we're going to have an introductory chapter. We're going to talk about the, describe it, the vision for each one, and then guidelines for the aspects of, of a quarter, the sites, buildings on the sites, both new construction and existing, awnings, canopy signs, so forth, open space, et cetera. Site guidelines, just all the aspects of, of a site, and I'm not going to read all these, but they just tell you all the things we look at. And how much that varies, and how much that is uniform reflects the character? So how far do you set back everything? How much parking do you want in the front to attract folks? How much do you need overall? How active do you want the first floor to be, and visual and open and attractive? How much character do you want on the buildings in terms of a monolithic box versus an interesting architectural, articulated design? So on. Looking at existing buildings, this was Fairfax, we just were talking, a sample of upgrading a facade of an existing building. How do you do additions? How do you locate those, and how compatible do you make them? And then going through all the other aspects of, of, of a existing structure, and then if you're building new, how do you want that to relate to the street, to parking, the entrances? All of that facade, how do you break down a much bigger building so it reads better? Materials and so on. And then we typically do a more detailed approach, because there's so many different building types on a quarter, you just can't write one guideline, but they serve different functions, so they're designed differently. And so we And so we write guidelines that relate to the building type. Because obviously multifamily building is different than a franchise national chain restaurant. And you have different types of buildings on many of these quarters already that aren't going anywhere. So how do you, how do you deal with that? So here's our process. We've already started, uh, obviously we've met with Rodney and his staff. We've toured it with them, all the quarters. We're in the process of documenting things and studying it now ourselves. We're having this meeting tonight with you all. And then we talked to Rodney, we really want to talk about outreach, public input and advisory committee. And I'll let Rodney give an update on the latest on the advisory committee.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, I'm excited about the advisory committee that we have put together at this point. We have a couple staff members from planning and some economic development. Um, from the planning commission, we have two commissioners, Judith Wigan and Adam Campbell. Both of them are professional planners, so they bring a lot of experience to the table. But I'm really excited about who we have from the development community at this time. We have Alan Dahl, who uh, has done lots of development in the city. Uh, Robin Miller, who's also done a lot of development in the city, not as much on the corridors, but has a lot of good practical experience and ideas for the city. Taylor Smith, who owns, um, I think several properties on the West End. I, I do not know Mr. Smith, but he was highly recommended and I'm glad to have someone representing the West End. And we have Ray Burkholder of Balls and Associates. And Balls and Associates does most of the site plans that we review in the city. So I'm excited to have that team in place at this point.
Sounds like an A-team right there.
I, I would, if I could add, um, when I talked to these two developers that are part of this team, a couple of things they said struck a chord with me. One of them said that our current guidelines are too subjective. That developers need clear, concise guidelines. So they know what's expected upfront. I couldn't, uh, agree more with them. And you know, also a comment was made by one of these developers that is that we need to strike a balance between community goals and cost of the developers. And I mean, that's a fine line, but that's something that we are, are going to try our best to accomplish with this rewrite.
Thank you.
This is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead.
Yes, thank you. Why were there no citizens involved or invited to be part of this advisory committee? And I, I recognize that Robin Miller lives here, Taylor Smith lives here. But, uh, but, but they, but why have we not expanded this committee to include the voices of people who are in, uh, who actually live in these entrance quarters?
We were trying to keep a very manageable group that we can work with and have, you know, monthly meetings or so, several meetings with. So it just couldn't be a open ended and a very large group. I'm not opposed to having a representative of a community association. But I have not reached out to anyone at this point.
Yeah. The other thing is we're going to get ready, the next, uh, slide or next couple of slides are going to show the outreach strategy that we're proposing for this project. So maybe if I go through that, that might add a little more information. So this, these are the attributes that we're going to get ready to look at next in each quarter. This is kind of a bird's eye view, a quick overview shot of each one. Just to try to get a reality check on what's really possible. How is the infrastructure? The overall road width and design of that, what's the zoning or how many different types of zones do we have? What's that resulted in? And the variety and parcel size or redevelopment potential, where are the redevelopment sites? How stable is the corner? Is it going trending up or down economically? And then what's it look like and how, how, how the building's designed, their condition? And is this a gateway for tourists and major visitors or is it a secondary corridor? And the likelihood of change and all that comes together. And we'll do a little numerical score and just then give a little summary, sort of a paragraph summary. Here are the overall aspects of this quarter, here are the overall aspects of that. And then if there's certain conditions that are unique or different, then we'd say, well, because of this change in use of residential to commercial, then we would, we would have separate guideline for mixed use, multiple mixed use versus straight commercial, whatever it might be. So we still have an overall section on buildings, but then we might and building types, but then in one or two of the quarters, we may, may customize it a little bit and just have an extra guideline. Or say this particular guideline would not apply. So we want a reality check of, of all of that. And that's going to be an interesting process, but this will be a start for us to kind of get the overall aspect of the quarter before we start the writing. And then the biggest aspect we see in the spring is going to be workshops, outreach, questionnaires, interviews and so on. Our structured public facilitation workshops that Kathy has designed and has used in a variety of different types of projects really invites the public and certain people from the public to come. We then divide them up into groups of about six. We then give them a question, maybe a half a dozen questions. We then have them talk for a half an hour or so. They pick their own scribe. They write it all down. And first, when they come in, we have them count one to six and they go to tables so that it's not one all time. Everybody gets five minutes to talk. Scribe writes down, the scribe comes up and says, here's what our group thinks, here's what our group thinks. Then we take all that information and then, and then hopefully the guidelines reflect that. So really, we're not preaching to the choir. We're not having all the same types in one group. And we're avoiding the one person who wants to dominate the whole evening. So everybody has an equal chance to participate and they've worked very well, uh, in where we've used them. We just finished a big, big series of those and guidelines for Charlotte, North Carolina. And we had a huge turnout and that worked really well. We then will do questionnaires for the staff, for business owners and property owners. We'll need your help in that regard to send them out. We'll post them on, on city websites. It can be filled in and completed. We then pick up and use you all to help us select fifteen to twenty people to do more in-depth interview, confidential interviews about this aspect. And then all that information we tabulated and collated, put in a background analysis report and presented to you all in the planning commission as we go through the process. So that's, that's our, that's the way we've worked, trying to get the public and given an opportunity. No matter what we do at the end, people will come out and say, how did this happen? What is this all about? You do the best you can and hopefully you get, get a whole media strategy from the city that'll go with this to publicize it and make sure that people have an opportunity to give their input. Then later in the spring into early summer, we'll do the first draft with all the text and some sample graphics. And after that's reviewed and feedback, we'll actually lay the whole document out. Present that to you all and advisory committee and the planning commission and then do a second public workshop where they see all of that all put together. And then post that, that final draft on the website for additional feedback. Then we do the final document, we deliver all these copies and so forth. It'll all be uh, accessible on the web and you can go between chapters and pages and so on. It all refer back to the table of content, so it's all linked. We did that recently with the historic ones.
We do that regularly now, so it can be posted.
Yeah.
Question, what happens to the existing corridor overlay? Is it being over, put aside?
Oh, the ordinance is still there.
Yeah, the guidelines, you mean the guidelines? Well, we've read through them and we started to outline the things that we feel are, are important aspects to have guidelines in that area. We probably will have the more general, we'll have a lot more graphics than, than the existing ones have. We will review it, but we're not going to update that. We're kind of changing it pretty much.
Putting that aside.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to find out, is it being set aside?
Yeah, we've looked at it and read a number of them and we'll try to make it a lot simpler. It's really overpowering the stuff to get, get way through that, to understand.
For each individual court, that's how we're going to do one document for all the quarters.
I will show you some samples here, just brief samples here. We're not going to go into a lot of detail.
Bill, and I was going to say, make a statement because then I, Steve and I both kind of ran on corridor overlay, people talking to us.
Right.
And in all honesty, a lot of what's being said and talk, talking to me is, it's a combination of corridor overlay and how fast or slow we get approvals. People say it takes too long to get approvals. I understand, I think, why maybe corridor overlay came about. I think that maybe people were taking a look at Greenville Avenue and God, good grief, we don't want any more of that. But I also think according to a lot of people, that you basically sterilized every place else. There's got to be a happy medium someplace. I mean, you get out these overlay, you know, you, you can't have uplight, I'm probably going to say it wrong. You can't have uplight, you can't have down lighting, you can't have it be so far back here. You gotta have a tree here. There's just so many little ifs, ands and buts. You can't have a signage, it's got to be this small or this big and over back this far. I understand it, but there's got to be a happy meeting, at least that's what I'm being told. And we've got to speed up our process of getting approval. All right. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 no. It's good, it's good. We've heard very similar things.
This is Brenda Mead, I have another question.
Counselor Mead.
Yeah, it relates again to, uh, to how we're going to get citizen input on this. Out, you know, the attendance at city council meetings is via Zoom anyway, and those in the room are typically twenty five, around twenty five people. We have fewer than five hundred people who currently receive our e-communications that announces, you know, uh, ability, the, the opportunity for, for citizens to, uh, to, uh, respond to surveys and that sort of thing. Uh, many, many people don't use Facebook. So what means of communication are you going to use to reach out to the citizens?
Mr. Rosenberg.
Our project is.
Yeah. Councilmember Mead, um, I, I've not personally delved into these issues at this point in time, but you did hear Mr. Frazier talk about coordinating with the city to come up with a public information campaign that would be associated with every step of the process. And I'm certain that Michelle Bixler is prepared to, to work side by side with Frazier Associates to come up with that plan so that we can do the utmost to reach out to as broad an audience as possible and encourage participation as we move through the process.
I appreciate that. And, and I think that's a good effort, that's a good way to go. Unfortunately, uh, you know, you look at the city's HUD grant and the response we get when our, our, our community development department reaches out to members of the community about getting their, their opinions on what uh, those funds need to be used for and what's important to the city. It, it just doesn't happen. And so I, we, we need to make a major change in the way we reach out to community members and give people the opportunity to express their feelings.
I, I understand your concern around that issue and I will discuss it with Ms. Bixler and you know, we will see how we can innovate in order to meet the citizens where they are to ensure that they're informed and encouraged to participate.
Thank you.
Don't worry, Mr. Frazier, I was not going to put that on you. Because you were looking at me.
We're giving you the overview of how we would do it and then we obviously would coordinate with you all to make whatever makes the most sense. And we've done workshops for each district or each quarter onsite, often not in a government building, but out where the people are.
Right.
We've done a lot of outreach. There is some limit to how much people actually respond, I will say that. We've gotten, we've gotten huge meetings, we've gotten tiny meetings and it's there's so many variables involved, but I think hopefully most of the residents will feel like if they chose to participate, they had an opportunity in one of those ways. Many choose not to till the end. Then we'll all hear from them. Okay, so I just want to go over a couple of projects to give you some idea about what we've done and how it's worked. Charlottesville, we did these, I don't know, ten years ago, they have a dozen quarters. And we did their guidelines for them. We first just sort of broke it down, there was different land uses and zoning within a quarter. So sometimes there's sub areas and again, that would, that would inform you as to how you might customize a particular guideline for a certain aspect of it that was going to be, needed to be dealt with on that quarter. Falls Church got, um, their charter changed. They have citywide design review of everything. They don't have much historic, they have just review of everything except single family houses. So a number of years ago, we did all their guidelines, most of which was commercial quarter, redevelopment and rehabbing existing buildings. And they've, they've gotten a lot more dense development because of the growth up there. And so they're building six and eight story mixed use and condos and apartments and so on with, with retail on the first floor. Fairfax, we just finished this, I guess, about two years ago. They have a historic downtown, just like Stanton, of course, it's much smaller, can't compare to Stanton. Then they have what they call their, uh, transition overlay, which is like the area around the historic, which is the blue, historic is the red. And then they have what they call their architectural control, which is basically all their quarters. And they also got their charter to allow them to do design review on everything except single family housing. And their aspect has been to take their key intersections and to rezone these into much more dense developments where they're going to be a larger mixed use series of buildings that are going to be architecturally compatible, a pedestrian network within them, parking in them and, and service and retail establishments on the first floors. So that they would get more of a walkable, more dense area. And these could be five or six story, uh, mixed use buildings on these intersections. And then that's the, the downtown core and even some, some of that around the edges of the district. That's their strategy. Here's just talking about how do you create scale for a building as opposed to a big box? And you start breaking it down with horizontal elements, mixture of materials, rhythm and spacing of, of, of those different parts of the facade and then adding the upper story windows, the voids of the storefronts, mixed use of office, residential, retail. And that's something that we looked at with Bill Hamilton for Central Avenue, oh gosh, fifteen years ago. We did a whole series of designs for him. It was a confidential project back then. It didn't go anywhere, but the idea is how do you grow out downtown and how do you get much more dense development? That brings in much more tax revenue and is a mixture of uses. And you put parking on the lower levels if you have any flood issues. So that was something else, we can show you that at another time, but uh, here's just redoing existing buildings and expanding them, upgrading them, adding outdoor dining, which is becoming a huge deal now with the pandemic. A low level of landscape to create an edge, but not to screen. You don't want to screen the building, screen too much because then you can't see your destination. So you're managing signage, you're managing landscape, you're managing facade design in a way that's attractive. And you can see this in the new development that's occurring out of the interstate shows that new level of design we're seeing. Wayansboro just took their McDonald's and made it look like ours. There's a brand new seven eleven going up in Fishesville, the latest modern image. You know, you're seeing that, that the, the national retail folks understand this, they want attractive development. And they know the next generation has to have that sort of hip vibe that, um, a lot of the nineteen fifties and sixties strip buildings didn't have. So either remodel it or you can put new, but it's all changing. And gosh, the buildings we're seeing going on Richmond Road shows you that's a big quarter. Everybody wants to be there now. There's a reason, the traffic counts are probably the best you've got and you have two interstates anyway. Cary, North Carolina was the same idea. It's mostly a new area, containment area for relocated Yankees is what I was told years ago. We did this a long time ago, but the idea was they have big intersections with huge shopping center type developments. And they were upgrading those architecturally. So each segment of an intersection had a different series of shops and then they tied all that in in one design in each area. And then they made it all pedestrian oriented within it. They really didn't have a, much of a downtown, it was mostly new. And then they would have corridors with residential hidden behind landscaping, big, big new subdivisions. Basically, that was their approach, the idea again, enhancing the intersections. Collierville, Tennessee is outside of Memphis, is the fastest growing small city in Tennessee. Very wealthy, we did historic guidelines and they came back and did guidelines for the whole city. And they did a whole new shopping center based on these. and they did a whole new shopping center based on these. And again, pedestrian-oriented, streetlights, walkability, and interesting architecture, all done in brick with different types of designs, four or five restaurants, you know, maybe close to a hundred shops, huge development.
Can I ask you, their street lighting, is it low lighting?
Oh yeah, everything now is downlit, yeah. Portsmouth, this was a different project. Portsmouth was looking at all their corridors, and again, what I talked about before, this, where we did that assessment of about eight or ten criteria. And then we ended up seeing the historic ones, what were redevelopment potential, which were stable residential. And that gave us an idea about where the city would then put its resources. And then we developed a whole package of public streetscape elements at different levels of improvement, depending on what was happening on those corridors. So it was pretty stable, you didn't need a whole lot. If it looked like it was getting ready for redevelopment, and we were dealing with brand-new Walmarts and big-box buildings on a couple of these corridors, and so that was gonna be a major upgrade. So those got more plantings and crosswalks and so forth to tie that area in, because that was getting totally redone. Other areas, we gave less, industrial areas, obviously, they got a lot less. But this was just another way of creating a strategy for if you have limited funds and limited resources, how do you develop an economic strategy to have those corridors get the best use and income and appearance you can have?
Hey, Bill?
Yeah.
Right here. Let me, can I just ask your, your thoughts, because it's, it's a concern of mine. Because of the pandemic and the way that we as a nation are starting to do business because of it, everything, you've got your Amazons and everybody else that they're, they're doing, you know, by mail, shipping or whatever, and I, I start to worry about our mom-and-pop shops, I start to worry about even the big-box stores. Everybody is, they're not getting out and going to visit stores, they're just getting on their computer and I'll have it here tomorrow or the next day.
Yeah, it's, you know, when you look at the, the impact of online shopping, and then you look at the pandemic, it's like these two perfect storms have come together in a very short period of time. And it's having a big impact on everybody, so.
But at the same time, what we're seeing and hearing about are people leaving bigger cities and coming to places like Stanton. They want to be in smaller communities, and so that's sort of an interesting place for us to be, too. Looking at the size of who we are, where we're located, very conveniently to a lot of places. Because people are able to work remotely more, they're looking for different communities, so.
I see my next-door neighbors, they're here, they came from the big city here.
Well, look at the prices of real estate. Steve, we, we're looking at, you know, over three hundred thousand dollars on a little Opie Street house now, nine-hour block. Unbelievable. The prices have just gone crazy, so people want to be here, and we've, we've had so much national press. I can't tell you how many people who call us on residential, we have to pick and choose our client, we're just overwhelmed. Mostly retirement folks or people relocating. And they've already heard about Stanton, we have people who've looked at six or eight communities and picked Stanton over the other seven.
But I think the other thing, I think we probably all have the feeling of this between the pandemic, it's like you want to get out. We're human beings and we like to get out and do things. So hopefully, we're gonna reach a place where we're all gonna want to be out again and doing things. So this is sort of a good planning point in time to be looking at your guidelines, in my opinion. Hopefully, we're staying this situated and with where the pandemic is going, hopefully, this will be ready when people are ready to do something.
And let me take a step backwards. When we were reviewing the corridor overlay ordinances and just the strategic plans, everything together, I can remember going to Bessie Weller, and everything was laid out, and the citizens had a chance to make comments and just examine what was being presented. I felt like those particular meetings were well-attended, would you agree?
Oh, we weren't directly involved in that, but yes, everywhere we've worked, I mean, we get anywhere from forty to a hundred people at, at a meeting at an evening. And I think, you know, Stanton people are very interested in this community, they love this community, they're very loyal to it. And I think we have a wonderful spirit here, and it is changing, but I think it offers tremendous opportunity amongst all those challenges, and we have so many new young people coming in. It's just, it's a very, there's so many positive attributes. But right now, we've got this double challenge of internet and COVID and so forth. We're just lucky where we are and what we've done to get ready for this for the last forty, fifty years. I mean, Kathy's worked in over thirty-five Virginia main streets, we worked in over a hundred Virginia communities, and Stanton has looked up to as like the Mecca. In fact, the National Main Street Conference is in Virginia this year, they picked Richmond. And all the architects from every state and Main Street architects, they said, well, we want to come early and go to Stanton for a day. So we have to entertain them and show them what's, what's, what we're doing here, which is really fascinating. So, yeah, we, so.
This is Brenda Mead. Counselor Mead?
So many of the people that I've talked to over the last couple of years who have moved to Stanton have talked about the fact that they came to Stanton periodically over a period of years. They, they, you know, they came to their point, the point in life where they were ready to find a, a permanent home, and they chose Stanton because we, we did preserve our, our cultural and architectural heritage and that we did pay attention to what our city looks like when people come into town and, and what, and make sure that it draws, and we need to make sure that it continues to draw people into Stanton. Otherwise, we just look like everywhere else, we look like Bristol, we look like Abingdon, we, we look like, you know, those places that are dying, frankly, in, in, in the Commonwealth because their populations are declining. So we want to both track those new folks who can come to Stanton and bring, bring their wealth with them, bring their ideas with them. We also need to make sure we have opportunities for people with low to moderate incomes to find housing and to feel welcome here as well.
Okay, thank you for those comments. We're gonna try to wrap up here pretty quick, but I know you have another presentation, and Jeff Johnson is probably sitting over there just wondering when this is gonna be over.
You're enjoying it, aren't you, Jeff? He's taking it all in.
So Kathy was involved in this, I wasn't involved in this one at all, but Suffolk's corridors, again, upgrading them with new guidelines and actually doing photo simulations to show them how things could get a little more dense and a little more attractive as they, as they were looking to grow. Charlotte, this is the most recent project we did, which is big new multifamily housing. How do you tie it in to smaller areas right off of the corridors? They have a new dense corridor strategy and rezoning, and so a lot of these are right along historic neighborhoods. So we just finished guidelines with them, all for multifamily housing and also for commercial, and there's lots of new commercial. They're getting six and eight-story condominium buildings and apartments with retail on the first floor, parking behind and underneath, and very attractive. I mean, I think there were seventeen cranes on the skyline the last time we were in Charlotte recently. It never, it never slowed down in Charlotte, they said. But again, that's a huge different city. Fairfax, Kathy did this a long time ago, and we did guidelines, but this really went beyond that. After studying that and doing, rewriting some of the ordinances for signs, landscaping and parking and creating the guidelines, they then created actual facade improvement program where they provided, the Fairfax County provided, design assistance to property owners, and then they teamed that, they had a grant program and loan program with the banks. So then it became actually an overall corridor enhancement program, the guidelines being a component in that to guide the new development and the redevelopment. So that's, that's another aspect to look at the bigger picture. Again.
Fredericksburg looked at their corridors. We did an assessment of several of the corridors, what their existing conditions were, and then they, they too had a grant program, and we would do designs, you know, here's a, you know, a good, good rich Michelin tire place. And it was just, how can they fix it up and make it a little more inviting? So that was just a after example of that quarter sign. And then the next one.
Also, we didn't put this in here, but Henrico has us on call, just on call for design assistance. Anytime a property owner wants to fix up a building, they'll pay for the design.
And that's all quarters.
Just quarters, Henrico, so we're doing those as well. This has been a really interesting story of Lexington, this has been a good while back, too.
But they had a, their planner, building inspector, multi-task guy. He, this is, you know, sixty coming in, sixty, right, yeah, and this is what it looked like on the left, and he said, we gotta do something to fix this up, this is our entrance in downtown. And so they did a, a whole program of grants, and they did the landscaping. We designed the signs, everybody brought their signs down to a monument level and just created a whole completely different feel to that quarter going into the historic town.
Yeah, and there were guidelines that they had, and then we did a lot of the individual designs. Interesting thing.
But they had financial incentives there to get people on board to do it.
He started with a hundred thousand, and he went to two hundred thousand, like several years. And people were like, what, you want to do, what, I don't get it. So he took public works, and they came out with plywood, and they put up a monument sign and said, now, when you drive by, look how easy that is to see versus having to look all around. And they literally put things out there for people to better understand it. And after they did that quarter, he, he told us that, he said, if you can find anybody on this quarter that didn't think this was a good idea, let me know, because you won't find any business person. Then the second quarter asked if they could also do that. Again, though, but this involved a little bit of seed money. So it was a coordinated public-private, beyond just having the regulations saying, here, if you're gonna do anything, you gotta do it this way. It was an active outreach program. So today, here we are, national, regional, national destination, lots of opportunities. We could be in a lot worse places than we're in. And we've got really nice corridors already, in many cases, we have some challenges, we, every community does. There's never any money, anytime, you know, it's not about the money, it's about the priorities. What's the priority? Then the money follows the priorities. So we really appreciate having this opportunity, we're sorry we rambled on too long. We've been here a long time, we love this town, this is our town. Forty-five years we've been working here, that's our staff. Outside of Candy, our office manager, who's a hoot, every one of our employees has been with us between ten and twenty-five years.
Oh, wow.
And so we're really lucky, they love being a part of their Stanton people, too, many, you know many of them. But thank you very much, and.
Well, thank you. Are there any questions?
I have one, it's not a question.
Counselor Darby?
I just want to make a comment. I really appreciate the plan that you've presented tonight, because it was hard, it's so much information when you look at what's there now, that it's been hard to try to figure out. For me, okay, where do we even, how do we even start, you know, what's the first, where's the first bite? How do we even start this? So I really appreciate this, I think it's good foundation and good direction moving forward.
Thank you.
Now, when I first started studying corridor overlays, I looked at Fair Oaks in Northern Virginia. Have you all had any work in that area? Okay, all right. To me, it was just, it was very pleasant to drive into that area and to see the aesthetics. It was just pleasing to the eyes. I would like to make one comment, the, you mentioned malls are closing. The Stanton Mall is in the county, not the city, for anyone listening.
Yeah. We got the land of the north.
But thank you so much, we really appreciate the fact that you've taken time out of your busy schedule to come to speak with both the city council and the planning commission, and we look forward to this partnership and moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Do you all have any other?
I just wanted to say that it looks like a great process, and I'm very much looking forward to participating in it and being a part of the planning commission when we do this, and seeing what the results will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You. All right, Mr. Rosenberg. Item B is a presentation of Union Town Water and Sewer Extension Study.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Jeff Johnston, the Public Works Director, will make his way to the podium and present this item.
Welcome.
Done so soon, Bill.
It was excellent, and that's a hard act to follow.
I'm here, members of council, members of the planning commission. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening to talk about the Union Town community. In Stanton, it was a little over a year ago, I had just arrived, and I went to my first planning commission meeting, at the end of which, they asked me to take a look at Union Town with the somewhat generic guidance of something needs to be done out there. So we did, and that sort of started, Lyle Hart, our city engineer and I, on a path that has led us this evening to discuss what we found in Union Town and what we would propose to do in Union Town, so. This is what I found, and there are a lot of pictures in this presentation with a lot of different colored lines, and I'm gonna try and walk through them one step at a time, because taken all at once, it's, it's a lot. There are water and there are sewer issues in Union Town. They are related, but they are quite frankly separate. Water service in the late nineties, and depending who you talk to, it was ninety-six or ninety-seven, the National Avenue Bridge was demolished, which was not only a bridge, but it was a pipeline bridge. And our water line was demolished when the bridge was demolished. So if you look at that, you can see the water line heading down National Avenue and then stopping at the railroad tracks, and on the other side, another line picking up. What that has left us with is a couple of dead-end pipes. And on the north side of the, of the railroad track, a very long, fairly large, six-inch dead-end pipe, which is very problematic from a water standpoint. We flush that six-inch line constantly to the tune of about five hundred gallons a day to keep the water moving, to keep good residual chlorine, and to maintain the water quality. Same issues on the south side, those sort of dead-end sticks that head down into Union Town. Two-inch lines, not a lot of water moving, difficult to keep the good water quality, and not getting the circulation that we used to have when the bridge was there. So there are systemic, really distribution system-wide issues in Union Town that started with the demolition of that bridge. And from a sewer standpoint, no collection infrastructure was ever installed. It's all septic systems. And, and septic systems are not inherently evil. A well-designed, well-maintained septic system is a perfectly acceptable wastewater solution. But inside the city limits, it presents me with a couple of problems. Number one, wastewater is an economy of scale business. The more people are participating, the better a deal it is for everyone who's participating. And secondly, that septic system is really a conversation between the property owner and the health department. And the city has no visibility, has no equity in what's going on. So there are wastewater things that are happening inside the city limits that we are really at arm's length from, which obviously isn't a problem until it's a very large problem. So that's sort of the background, which then led to, so the study. Now, our going-in proposition, and this is a rule of thumb, all developed lots in the city should be served by the city and water sewer infrastructure. And Union Town is obviously a significant, certainly not the only, but a significant area that is currently lacking sewer service. And then on the water side, that distribution is problematic, and not just problematic for Union Town, but problematic for our entire water distribution system writ large. So with those sort of three basic goals in mind. So with those sort of three basic goals in mind, we commissioned Wiley Wilson to identify and evaluate some alternatives to solve both the water and sanitary sewer service issues throughout the Union Town service area. And the Union Town service area is both the area north and south of the railroad tracks. So not just the ones that are currently developed or have been developed in the past, but the entire area. And the design is to support a popular, not the current population, the population should that entire area be built out as in full R2 residential development. So the idea is to get, to address not today's issues, but the future's issues moving forward. Now, they looked at a lot of options. I would say that the result of all those options is the same. Circulating water service throughout Union Town and sanitary sewer service throughout Union Town. The options are largely for Lyle and I to look at, pipe placement, hydraulics, but they all arrive at the same conclusion. So we'll talk about the projects we're proposing and a little bit about some of the alternatives as well. Start on the north side of the tracks with the sewer. And this really was the only alternative. Now, you can see some dotted lines down there toward the concrete plant with some alternate pipe placements. But really, the topography there is to collect the sewage and send it down the hill towards Statler Boulevard. And there's really not a lot of options in doing that. So you've got one line running along the railroad tracks, another down Anthony Street, another one picking up the backside of the hill. And then the line sort of snakes its way through the concrete plant, connects to a manhole right off of Statler Boulevard. Pretty straightforward. One point six million dollars. That includes both the design and construction cost estimated. And you get to the south side, it's, there's a few more options. Now, the one we're proposing runs collectors throughout the Union Town neighborhood, down to the railroad track, takes them down the hill, then goes underneath the railroad track and connects with the north sewer alternative right there at the concrete plant, and then follows it down to that manhole at Statler. Now, a couple of the other options that were looked at, one was to sort of gather it down by the railroad tracks and pump it back up to the sewer main that's running down Richmond Avenue, which is a little less pipe, but it is a pump station. And the world's most reliable pump is still not as reliable as gravity. So the idea is to, gravity sewer, that is always gonna work. There's also an option of maybe instead of crossing the railroad tracks, snaking it through Valley Building Supply and making a connection a little bit closer to the intersection of Statler and Richmond. Obviously, that's a much tighter fit. The usements will be tougher to get to. And that sewer at that portion of Statler isn't as large or as new. And so the preferred alternative would be to get under the railroad track and get over and make that single connection on the north side. And at one point three million dollars, that was also the lowest-priced alternative. That is sort of the layout on sewer. It provides gravity sewer for the entire Union Town area. Any questions on sewer before we get into water?
Are there any questions?
Oh, I do have a question. How likely do you think it is the railroad would provide, would allow us?
Although, we've had some experience. You can see, when we get to the water, we already have a, a line running underneath the railroad track. They'll, they'll horizontal boring.
Oh, they do? Okay.
Underneath it. I mean, you have to meet their requirements, but it's done. Yeah, we'll talk about crossing the railroad tracks a little bit on the water side as well. That is, that's always a consideration. One last thing on the sewer, you can see a sort of a dotted line running from Valley Building Supply down. That's not a part of this project, but having that line in place would allow us to, if we wanted to extend another feeder line out that way, that's outside the Union Town service area, but it would provide a gravity sewer into that little area as well. So it has some, some possible future build-out options as well. Let's talk water. Again, on the north side, pretty straightforward. We'll connect to that six-inch line, right where, sort of where it dead-ends at the railroad track and run it down Anthony Street, all the way down and connecting with the water line that comes down Young Street and then under the railroad tracks. And that will sort of reestablish that circulating loop on both sides of the track that will keep water moving in that pipe at all times. Also, that now gives us another way to push water to Stanton Crossing and that side of town without using Richmond, without using Richmond Avenue water line. So when it comes to, you know, when it comes time to work on that line, or should that line decide on itself that it's time to work on that line, it would give us an alternate way to push water to that end of town that we currently don't have.
We don't have any.
No, we don't. That's good.
So like I said, the sanitary sewer issues in Union Town are fairly, are fairly closely held to Union Town. The water issues in Union Town affect the city's water distribution system on a much grander scale. Now, a couple of the other options, this was the only option on the north side, it's pretty straightforward. When you go to the south side, there were a number of options. What we, what we would like to do is again, run good circulating sewer water lines through the neighborhood, then down to that Young Street line, where it will then connect, go underneath railroad tracks, connect to the North Street and maintain that good circulation. There were two other options. One was to just go back to the future and put the pipe bridge back along National Avenue. Just run, run the pipe, build, build another bridge and run the pipe through it. There's some operational issues there. The height, we'd have to get it up pretty high to meet the railroad's requirements. Not a big fan of having exposed pipes. Just bad things happen when people, when, when the pipes are exposed. And they can get cold, they can freeze, they can break. It was also relatively pricey to go that route. We also looked at, instead of going all the way down to Young Street, to making, making that crossing a little bit sooner, similar to where we were pushing the sewer line through. Well, that requires another boring under the railroad track. It is a little bit less pipe, makes a slightly smaller loop. And the cost of those two options, either connecting to Young Street or making a new railroad corner, essentially the same, certainly within the margin of error of an estimate at this point in the process. But tying into our existing line, we felt gave us a simpler project, a cleaner project, and a more, I would say, a more buildable loop. Because again, it brings in, brings circulating water to some areas next to Union Town as well as Union Town proper. So those are sort of the four elements. When you put them all together, you get this little bowl of spaghetti. There's just a lot going on. But, so it's about a little under three million dollars in sewer project, a little over two million dollars in water line project. We'll add, we'd like to add both those projects, we'll add both those projects to the capital improvement plan. Ideally, it would be executed in the same fiscal year. Ideally, they'd be executed in a single contract to achieve economies of scale and to minimize disruption in that neighborhood. But that's not an absolute. They could be, they could be accomplished separately. And then we would want to get the design going about a year ahead of the construction.
If they're designed separately, then, I mean, is that going to increase the cost rather than having them together?
They are, the projects are estimated as if they were done independently.
Okay.
So by doing them together, we might achieve some savings.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Leslie? Does this meet ARPA funds?
I will have to check with Mr. Traer about that. I'd, presumably, yes, they would, correct?
The infrastructure?
Yes. So I think at one point, we had talked about using ARPA funds for these. And right now, I'm looking, I think they're unfunded, unscheduled, but if there was a decision to use ARPA funds, I believe that could be done.
Yeah.
But I'll talk to Mr. Traer for sure tomorrow, now that we've done this work session.
Yeah, please do.
We'll do that.
This is Carolyn Dahl. There, there are additional ARPA funds that are competitive grants that are specifically for stormwater, water, sewer, those kinds of things. To me, this whole effort would be, would potentially, we could use the ARPA competitive grant money and not the ones that have been directly allocated to the city.
Well, we'll look into that. I'm also curious as to what the infrastructure bill might offer as well, once we understand more details of that. So there's, there's several possibilities, including.
There's lots of money out there.
That's right. So we'll have to kind of pull all that information together.
And, and as we've been looking at it, you know, our water and sewer fund capital improvement plans are well-established. There's a lot of projects on it. If any of those projects are the benefactors of some additional money, that would open up space, that would allow new projects like this to have an accelerated path forward. So it doesn't have to be a direct benefit to this project, there may be indirect benefits to some of those other funding sources that clear a path for this project to move, even if it isn't directly funded. So, you know, the rising tide lifts all boats when, in, in something like this.
And we still have not decided what we're, how we're gonna get water into Stanton Crossing, have we?
Well, we, we can, we can get water to Stanton Crossing now, down Richmond Avenue. This would provide us an alternative.
Alternative. Yes.
Which is, and again, there's, no, that is, I guess, a subject, I guess, for another conversation as to the water needs of Stanton Crossing and how we'll meet those going forward. But that is sort of the, you know, taken in total, what we would like to do to Union Town to address both the sanitary sewer issues there as well as the problems of the water distribution. And last slide. And it's just, I guess, a foregone conclusion at this point, but extending that service will address all these issues and add additional functionality and resiliency at water distribution throughout the Richmond Avenue Stanton Crossing area.
And you, and you said, if we were to do all of these, this would not just fix the problem now, but this would extend the life of it down forty, fifty years, right?
The, the backbone utilities that are put in place are sized for full development. So on the north, and I'll use, for example, the north side of the railroad track, we're putting in some basic sewer backbones. If those areas were to be subdivided and fully developed, additional collectors would have to be radicals, but the backbone would be there that would allow that development to tie in to the sanitary sewer. So they're sized for full development across that entire footprint.
There was a question about the railroad. You feel that that will not be an issue working with the railroad?
It will be an issue. I don't feel it will be a showstopper.
Okay. All right.
They.
It is the railroad.
Yes. They are, they are the railroad and they, they, they have to, have to be reckoned with. But again, we have existing penetrations through the right-of-way.
Okay.
And, and it can be done.
This is Carolyn Dahl.
Sounds good.
This is Brenda Mead.
Councilor Mead.
I just wanted to add that I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the city of Stanton to develop an area of mixed-income residential development. The area already has access to public transportation and if, and, and should we be able to develop this area to the, to the west, folks would have access to downtown Stanton via bike pedestrian routes, and to the east, access to shopping, grocery shopping, et cetera, like Martin's, and to, and to some of the other retail establishments to the, to the west. I beg your pardon, to the east. So I, I think this is a win, you know, for those, for those property owners who have owned property here, and this was an historic minority community, for those properties, they, those owners have foregone the, the growth in value of property values for many years because they could not get access to sewer and, and to good water. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to write, which, which was what was an economic, environmental injustice to the folks who live in that community.
And I, and I'd also like to add that this, like I said, this is not the only area in town that doesn't have access to the sanitary sewer system. So over time, you may see other projects being filtered into the CIP to start picking off some of the other ones. And hopefully, over time, get more and more of the city on a level footing when it comes to public utilities.
Well, Union Town does have some rich history for the city of Stanton and Union Town deserves some love. So, thank you.
This is Carolyn Dahl.
Councilor Dahl.
And, and the whole subject of sewer, I asked some years ago, two or three, four years ago, how many properties we had in the city that used septic and not, and wasn't on a public sewer system? And I really thought that I was, the answer I would get would be, eh, eight, but it was like a hundred and twelve or something like that. And, and I wonder, you know, with infrastructure funds available, et cetera, some people can't afford the money for the hookup, but the sewer is actually there in a few cases at least. And, and I wonder if we could look at a waiver to get everybody off of septic onto the sewer system. And like you said, if they come up in, in CIP, that's great, but we might have an opportunity to, you know, knock, knock those all out.
I, I, I as well, when I asked that question, how many customers do we have who have water accounts but not sewer accounts, was surprised at the number. And then when I looked at it on a map, the dispersion, there are, there are lots in just about every part of town. Some of them, like Union Town, in somewhat clustered, other times, an individual house on a block that is not connected to the sewer, maybe one or two houses, sometimes, you know, three houses and then one that is, and then three more that aren't. It is, so as we look at, at resolving that, we are trying to hit those areas where we can with a single project, address as many as possible. But, because there are, you know, onesies, twosies out there that would be awfully expensive to go chase. But we can, I, Lyle and I can probably pull together some, some statistics on that because there are, I agree, there are folks out there who have access to a, to a, to the sewer system, have chosen not to connect. And I think the city code, if the system was in place before nineteen ninety-five, I believe, is it five? Yeah. Allows them that choice, provided their septic system is functional and operational. But we can gather some of those statistics and sort of get a feel for where we are and track our progress as we, as we move forward.
All right. Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you for the report. Very fascinating. Mr. Rosenberg, did you have anything else for the council? All right. With that, as mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the special joint meeting of the Stanton City Council and the Stanton Planning Commission adjourned. And the planning commission meeting is also adjourned.